Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with every heart, soul, and soul.
Well, just gonna turn that off and then we went to the pledge.
Is that your seven o'clock reminder of the meeting?
No, it was actually, no. Nick was talking about it before. Probably was talking about Wednesday's meeting.
Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda?
I have nothing to add. Make a motion to approve the agenda is written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Okay, attached are the minutes from our last meeting, June 28th. You have the accounts receivable, three-year comparison for the golf course, the cash balance report, the graphs are in there, and then also the bills for payment. If I could just add a couple quick comments when we get to the payments. When we have our council meetings from now until November, you will be seeing the reports for accounts payable that will look like what you have tonight. Let me try to do it on screen. The reason is, is because Andrea will be on maternity leave and I'm gonna try to do part and her job. And this is the easiest way for me to figure out how to do anything. Just gonna be honest. So that would be the format for the accounts payable. Anything else, Andrea?
On the minutes, I'll just make a correction at the end. I think I signed my name, 'cause I did the minutes, but your name was still on it. So just a correction to make.
Okay.
I did the minutes. Payables, just to point out, there's some bond payments going out to Northland for about fifty-six thousand. And then there was one invoice that got added to yours that actually the PUC approves it was for a Fariby. So actually, what you're gonna prove tonight is less than what is on the agenda. So it's actually eighty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and seven cents, 'cause the Fariby invoice for forty-two thousand was for the commission. So just to make note of that as well. Otherwise, everything else is routine in nature unless there's a question on any of I will highlight, maybe at this time too, Clinton can allude to it as well, but we're still waiting on the first half LGA from the state as well. So I think that's small cities. Not sure we haven't really gotten an update of when we're gonna get that, but just something to be aware of.
So with local government aid, we usually get the first half, the state aid, we get the first half usually at the end of June or very beginning of July, and then we get the second half at the end of the year in December. So that's what Andrea's referring to, is just taking a couple extra weeks.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with a minor change to the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public forum. Is there anybody here wishes to speak through public forum? Public forum? Public forum. Moving on. Notice the communications.
I do not have any for you.
Council reports.
Public utilities met earlier tonight. Guess the big issues on the agenda there was the water tower rehab. That's could potentially take up to, where's Nate, nine weeks? Ten weeks? The customer should not see a change in there if everything goes good. So hopefully there's no hiccups of that. There is plans in place for fire service response and all that. And then, what I missed Nate, that was a big agenda item, I thought.
We don't have a fire base.
That's scheduled to start on August 9th.
Right.
Has been notices put out on Facebook, where else we, in the bills.
Website.
Website. Let everybody know that that's happening. So hopefully everybody's aware of it.
Nate's still moving forward with AMI stuff that we approved last time, the meters.
Yep.
So he's still working on that and getting close, so. Jimmy, you been anywhere?
Nope.
I got nothing.
Okay.
Guess I had, the audit was finally done. Have you got a copy of it yet?
No.
Okay, I have a meeting tomorrow with exit interview with the audit, auditors on that, so.
That would be nice.
I'll make sure you get that for the Whispering Creeks audit.
Okay.
All right, the administrative reports, attached, the first page here is the reconciliation for our bank account for the end of June. You also have the cash balance report, which is dated last Friday. Also attached, a letter that residents along Fourth and Youngerburg received that on or about August 15th, the subcontractor doing the seeding work on Fourth and Youngerburg will be reseeding portions of that. So I put that letter in there. Safe routes to school, the project memo was submitted last week by Jason Femright. We submit that memo to the state's DOT office for review. So that's the next step in our, in our process here. So we did attach the diagrams that were included in that memo that the state is reviewing right now. And I believe there's a schedule on there as well for you. Does anybody have any questions about the safe routes? I know we have received a few questions here recently. Hopefully this can answer a few questions that people may have. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I have several, actually. First of all, what was the criteria to use to determine which routes you were going to improve and what streets were going to be used as improvement?
It was just community input. We had some public hearings, we had some open houses. We did a review right around the school, the JWP and Trinity Schools. That was the main priority, to get safe routes.
What is the, what is the philosophy behind safe routes to school?
It's federal money. Federal money, you work with the state, and there's actually quite a few communities that get it. But it's basically fixing up sidewalks, bicycle paths, intersections that are more user-friendly for, literally for kids that are going to school.
We're trying to connect some of the outlying new additions into the resident cities.
I understand that, but it doesn't do that.
What do you mean it doesn't do that?
I've taken the past week and went around town, and what you did, yeah, concentrates right around the school, but it doesn't deal with the North addition, it doesn't deal with any of the western, west part of the city without sidewalks, it doesn't deal with anything across Highway 14. Why were those sections or areas of the city neglected? I've got a diagram here. The pink lines are all streets that don't have sidewalks. The blue is where you're upgrading things. But there is probably four times as much area that hasn't been addressed as what did, was addressed. So my question is, what criteria did you use and why did we decide what, what areas were being improved and why were these neglected?
I think at the time, there was a, there's a cap on a target dollar amount that you could spend on this and we wanted...
I'd never heard that before.
We wanted a cap. We were assigned so much, what the...
While we applied for a certain dollar rule.
Yeah.
And that was...
We can always continue to go back to this fund and ask for more.
Right.
It was just concentrating in and around the school, and we're very fortunate to get what we've gotten. And, you know, if that's successful, I mean, I think we can look at those other areas and start to improve other neighborhoods, but, you know, just trying to keep the project somewhat of a realistic size.
Okay.
Some of the focus and...
I know on, on North Street where I live, there are at least ten children that walk on that street every morning and there are no sidewalks. Now, some of your project, you're upgrading sidewalks. Why would we not designate a safe area where there is no sidewalk rather than upgrading existing facilities? That, I've, I've got several questions about this and I don't think that, that I'm ready to, to accept this plan.
Well, it was submitted to the state a year plus ago and that's what they allow.
Oh, this wasn't, this wasn't a recent. This is last year's...
This is a grant that was awarded twenty years ago.
This has been put in place...
We started this in 2018, I think.
A couple of years ago, in 2018.
We started.
Okay, then I misunderstood the process. 'Cause I was assured in May that when we were talking about bike paths, that that was going to be dealt with in this, in this project, and it hasn't been in any way.
We were talking about what to do with the project. We could not add onto the project after we already received the award.
We pulled some off just to do the cost and...
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought this was new project, but it's an existing project from two years ago. All right.
We can look towards new projects once this one's successful and make a future application. And if, you know, it's successful, those folks that, you know, approved these grants are, you know, quite apt to, you know, work with the community that continues to be a good partner.
Thank you. You've, you've explained your situation and, and you've quieted me down nicely. So I would, I would like to see us pursue that as soon as possible.
I know some residents out in the Northwood addition have been asking some questions too, and I know that there was gonna be a, some stuff coming out of there. Yeah, I know. And I just got this, I haven't had a chance to share this with any of them yet, but sure.
If I could interrupt you a second, Andy. I believe during Jason's spiel here under new business, we were gonna touch on this anyways. We wanted to just hold off a minute and then he'll be at the podium and, is that all right?
Talk on safe routes?
Yes. Just hit that a minute before we go to the street program and, and that way you're at the podium and it's all recorded. And we'll jump to this other stuff and get to you in a second, is that all right?
Good.
Okay. Is that all right, gentlemen?
So I'm satisfied with safe routes and it's an old project.
The only, excuse me, the only other thing I have in my reports here is I put the schedule of the summer conference that the coalition is putting on in Alexandria. I know Jim will be up there for part of that on Thursday, I believe, so I just attached the schedule for you to look at.
There's a meeting, I believe it's Thursday at 2:10 on communication, I believe.
Yep.
And I kinda wanted to sit down on that and see if I can get any creative ideas of, of council communication. What time you, will you be there, Clinton?
Uh, well...
Early day?
Don't know. Wednesday I'll be there.
Okay, so I'll just luck you up then Thursday. Sure.
I got your number, man.
There you go. Here you go.
That's all I have for administrative reports.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve administrative reports.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Department heads, we got Nate in here.
You, the council representative and Mayor did a wonderful job. You had other questions for Nate.
Anybody have any questions for Nate? Anything from the police department down there?
He's on my radar.
All right, we have nothing under old business, so we're gonna move to new business. Now we're gonna see if we can get Jason up to the podium. Maybe we could just hit on that safe routes. Clinton's got the map up, kinda maybe just explain it to everybody here.
This isn't, this isn't the safe routes map.
Do you have those safe route maps we had up that afternoon?
Yeah, we met with, we met with the school to kinda bring them up to speed a number of weeks ago, as they're a key partner in this. So as we've talked about, this is a project that we've worked on a number of years ago and kinda identifying some of the, some of the issues leading to the school, some neighborhoods that were isolated from direct access through pedestrian walkways to the school. So we kinda focused on, on Main Street, making sure, you know, as far as the upgrades go, you know, there's heaved sidewalk and just, that's kind of a main thoroughfare that we looked at, getting to the school and then bringing in these other subdivisions. I believe that was some of the information that came out of some of those open house meetings, if you, if I recall, on doing that. And that's actually quite a big component to this project when we're talking about those trails, crossing the, the ditches that are out there. So the costs associated with that, it's a great infrastructure that we're gonna have and I think it's gonna be a big benefit to the entire community of people using that from a recreation standpoint as well. So that's connecting the Northwood subdivision.
And then, or is this over here, rolling anchors? Yeah.
To it, so.
I will, I'll add.
Andy, did you have some other questions from your, from the Northwood?
Well, there's been some talk here in the last, literally in the last week, that the trail, the current trail that goes, it goes south, and then it turns to gravel and it comes back towards like the pump or the well, that they would like to see that get upgraded a little bit.
The one that runs through, uh...
Past the...
Commons is property.
Well, it borders it to the south.
On the side.
Yep, on the far south edge it runs along.
So since, since, um, we can no longer use that, 'cause a lot of the kids, I mean, ride their bikes down the other gravel road, that they would like to see some improvements. I don't know. There's, as it goes south, it's blacktop, then when it turns to go back west, it's all gravel. And I don't know where the property lies through there, but I know that there will be some people bringing some ideas forward from the community out there.
Okay, yeah.
I know we had talked about adding on to this takes an act of God because it's a federally-funded program.
It is, we're kinda...
Maybe it's something we could look at, a separate project running at the same time.
Potentially, yeah. We're gonna wanna keep it separate from our project.
Separate behind them together at the same time.
Pervailing wages and stuff, but we can definitely, you know, we can improve other areas if, you know, that's the wishes of those neighborhoods and the wishes of the council to move forward with that stuff, by all means, as long as we have some...
Right away, so you're talking about this connection...
That stretch in there.
Right here.
Yep.
So this is the trail that goes around there and then...
Correct.
Oh, Volta Make won't let me in their sight.
Weird. Finally. All these years.
And the biggest, I guess the biggest issue is they'd like to get to the lake road or to the lake trail.
Out here.
Yep.
And they're currently using the path.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Like I said, there's gonna be, they've been working on some things out there to kinda present, so.
If I could just add something, this is a, something I found out at about three o'clock today, but for a few years, we did, Janesville did receive state funding, small cities assistance for streets, but for a couple, three years, we did not get it. The transportation bill that was passed and signed last week has money in there. So the email that I read today said that we're probably gonna get about forty thousand bucks sometime this year. So maybe we can use some of that money for...
That'd be a very nice, yeah. That'd be good discussion next few months.
When we know how much it's gonna be and when we're gonna get it.
Yep.
And I don't even know where the property lies through there or all that.
Yeah, this is...
I don't know how tight, I don't know how tight that is.
Down through here, and then this is, you know, obviously this is city property there.
Right.
But I try to...
Clinton, question, do we have right of access, right of way through that, that emergency access or not? I, I understood that when she bought that property, that emergency access was usable, that that was not, that she could not restrict use of that.
For emergency access, she can act.
Just that.
Right.
That's what, that's what is limited to.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
So for a trail, I may have to get some kind of an easement there for a trail along that side.
Well, I just kinda, we wanted to bring it up and Andy said maybe that we might be getting some input from the community down there.
Yeah.
Something we can look at here in the future, but something I wanted to make you aware of, Jason.
Okay, yep.
Another thing, last fall, I know I was at a few of these meetings, and we did talk about the south end of town down there by Burns's and that, and putting that in the safe routes to school. That's not something we're doing now?
It's not.
Okay.
No. It was never in our original application. You know, we talked about...
I know it was discussed last fall.
It's like a tag on to, to the project, but...
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Yeah, that we can't...
Salt Teal and, and South Street, none of them have sidewalks.
Right, yeah.
I mean, some of it, some of those streets are upgraded, they will get sidewalks.
Right.
I assume Allen's one of them, you got highlighted, which will get sidewalks next year.
Allen, I think, has, has...
They have it on some of it.
Have some sidewalks.
On some of it, they do.
Market doesn't, one that really has fried me is Craig. Runs all the way from north to south and it has no sidewalks.
Just had significant challenges. I remember when we did that project, just due to the topography of it, it was just very, very challenging on Craig, you know.
That's why I think that a bike path or a driveway on the, on the actual road access would be more acceptable and less expensive than, than trying to put sidewalks in some of these neighborhoods. I really do believe that that would be a better approach for us.
Is that a matter of allowing no parking and do it to striping on the road? Is that all we're talking about? Just so I'm clear?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do we have anything else for Jason on the safe routes before he moves on?
I, no. I don't think so.
What, you have more to form it, Clinton?
No, I didn't realize, yeah. I didn't have cameras to shoot, but that's okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Yep.
Now you wanna hit on your street project, Jason?
Yeah, here's a schedule we'll start to look at.
Thank you.
Here we'll come. We're at step one of the whole schedule and we'll be talking about the schedule as we go through all of this.
Get them worked up over there.
All right. So we're here today to, you know, a pseudo-work session, but just really to introduce the 2022 project that's been on the capital improvement plan for quite some time, and we're just kinda moving through the process, bringing you up to speed a little bit of what we're doing here before we start this. Obviously, we have twenty steps to go through. We're at step one, where we're just kinda authorizing things to get going. But we have dates in here, essentially, so we're bidding this project here over the winter, awarding it late winter, early spring, and then construction next year. So and we're following the 429 process for assessing improvements as we have done on all of our other projects over the years. So with this, we have the Allen Street reconstruction segment from west to Main Street, as highlighted here. Some of the improvements down in this intersection were achieved when we did the 2020, or the nineteen project, excuse me. And down near that intersection, we upgraded some of the storm sewer in that area, so we're really ready to just basically tie on to that and head up the hill and, and reconstruct Allen Street, curb and gutter, sidewalk on one side of the road, and then tying into Main Street there. We had a meeting here with city staff and, and really looked at what are our needs in the community, and Allen Street was definitely top of the list. And then this East and Grove area that we have in, in kinda orange over there was also, it's been a theme over the years, is some significant challenges within that neighborhood there, essentially a very unimproved road, significant amount of infrastructure breaks over the years in that area, and it's, in talking to staff, some of our worst infrastructure underneath the road in that area. So we brought that forward for council discussion and consideration with this project. Just looking at the size of the project, what have we kinda targeted over the past few years, has been in around that $2 million amount. This, as we're showing it here, both of those is above that. I think we're looking at about 1.75 to 1.8 for the blue, and then about 8.50 to 900 for what is in the orange, which is a little bit different than what we've been talking about, but I think just due to the nature of the infrastructure that's out there, that neighborhood, historically low interest rates, we wanted to bring it to you for discussion and see if this is something that you want to entertain with this project. I think this is a great-sized project, would garner a lot of interest from contractors and, and getting two things accomplished with two different neighborhoods being improved with this. So in that Grove and East Street area, it would not be a, a normal city street. We're talking about probably a 24-foot wide roadway with curb and gutter there, a little additional storm sewer, since there isn't much happening there, just to drain some of that, and then sidewalk on one side, and essentially a sidewalk also here, it would tie down to the new trail with the safe routes to school. So bringing that whole neighborhood there on a sidewalk system to the trail to be able to get to the school. So that's what we've been talking about, and that's what I would discuss in the feasibility report, is really the next step here tonight, is if we wanna move forward with this, taking direction from you, you'll authorize us to prepare the feasibility report, we'll look at this, we'll come back to you and discuss these improvements with better illustrations than just a couple lines on, on a map of what we're actually gonna do, put some cost estimates to it. There'll be some preliminary assessment rolls prepared with that, allowing you to make some decisions if this is the direction we wanna go and moving into what is called the improvement hearing then next. So...
You're making that narrower than our, our normal roads in town?
That's what we're talking about.
Curb and gutter and everything still also though. So that allows for parking on one side and not both, correct? Do you narrow it that much?
It would be, uh...
Well, if you...
That gives you a...
You could, it's gonna be pretty local parking. I mean, we, we may wanna look at 28 to allow some parking. 24 is gonna be pretty tight to be able to allow parking and have people get through, but...
Both sides you get.
But...
Even on a normal street, if you got both sides.
But we're really talking about a unique subdivision. Nobody's going there other than who lives there. So cars parked there, a car can go by, the other one can go by. You know, we're just trying to keep the cost down for a, a neighborhood like this that doesn't see really through traffic other than just the neighbors there, yet allowing the pedestrians to, you know, utilize the sidewalks through that area, so. We would be looking at a little bit smaller curb and gutter section, not the typical B618. We'd be looking at, you know, a smaller gutter, so allowing, just basically lining the road with concrete. We'd potentially look at drive over, depending on how the survey looks and just being able to get that in there with the least amount of intrusion on it.
Can you bid these out as, you know, we're definitely gonna do this project, but depending on the price?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a possibility?
Absolutely it is.
Is it an option?
Yeah, we could definitely alternate that other East and Grove. I mean, that can definitely be done, the design is done, and we alternate it, and if we don't wanna do it, put that portion of the plans on the shelf and bring that back with, with the next project. That's definitely an option.
I don't know if anybody still wanna do it, it's just, is it cost-effective to do it now, you know, with the upkeep and the, the bad interest rates are low now and it's...
Continuing to fix things out there and basically, an underserved neighborhood, I would, you know, classify it based on the utilities challenges and then, you know, the roadway that it is, so. So we're looking for you guys to authorize us to move forward with the feasibility report. We'd look at this, and just kinda sensing a theme, I will keep these two projects separate. At no point, we're just gonna meld them together, but we'll keep them separate and kinda keep At no point, we're just gonna meld them together, but we'll keep them separate and kinda keep them moving along, hopefully bidding them at the same time here, and then if, and we could definitely do that one as an alternate, if that's the wishes of the council.
When I ask this, and you're probably gonna think I'm being smart, but can we get water to go downhill? There's not much fall on this street.
There isn't much fall on the street, right. That's why we need to get some catch basins up in there.
No, Fourth Street, there's a lot of fall, and we've still got puddles, mainly right in front of my house.
In the curb or in the road?
Curb and gutter.
Curb.
Puddles up. Can't make it the last 40 feet to the drain.
So where will the water go if there, it does look like that's lower than, is there a pump or what is it?
No, no, we're gonna, well, I haven't really looked at it fully. I mean, we're gonna essentially have to get it down here-
To that ditch.
To the ditch, and just bringing in some smaller storm sewer up in there. Right now, there's nothing. There isn't any storm sewer.
There's no storm, there's no curb.
There's nothing. It just runs in the road right now. I was just kinda driving through it. It looks like the water just kinda ends up in the road and eventually goes to the south, so.
I think if we can, you know, always have it in our back pocket that we can not do the one, I'd make a motion to move forward into looking into that.
Adopt resolution 14.
Yep, that's my, that's my, my motion is to adopt 2021-14.
That's for both projects, right?
That's to look into both projects.
Right.
It's a feasibility report on both projects. Whether or not we can do the other one.
That's the next step.
Yep.
But that's to move forward with both.
Correct.
Right. I would second Andy's motion on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anything else for Jason while he's here?
So I'll be back in a month, and we'll do this again with a little bit more detail. Okay?
Other questions for Jason? I have a few on. What's planned, scheduled fixes on Fourth Street?
Yes, the fixes?
Quite a few things.
Punch list, yeah. I mean, grass is obviously a big component of that.
That's what everybody sees. There's another, some water issues that need to be addressed, too. Not just in front of my house. There's a few others that need to be addressed. When does that get done?
Before we accept the project here, so, yeah. They're very, very busy. I'll beat on them a little bit, get them out there.
I know on the Allen, on the Younger Berlin, there's some, some issues there with, needs to be built back up to where it was, the gravel lots and stuff that are off the tools. Just things that people have brought up to me that haven't been addressed yet.
I didn't know that was a concern. I haven't heard that one. On the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, talk to your neighbors, apparently.
If we could, you know, if we could get some of these issues, I mean, in an email or something to us, so that we're made aware of them, or let Clinton know, let me know. We're definitely still continuing to work on a punch list.
I know he knows.
What's that?
I know Alec knows. He's been in contact with him, so.
Yep.
Will he be our site manager, whatever, or will it be somebody else by then, or?
Next year?
Is he, we've had him for two projects now. I know the progression of how things-
Yeah.
He kinda graduate up to bigger and better things.
We'll be evaluating things over the winter, yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I know you can't say it, but I just didn't know if he's to the point where he's moving up to bigger, better projects and our little stuff.
We'll talk about that in his review.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Thanks, everybody.
Jason, have a good night.
We are going to switch things up. We're gonna jump new business number three ahead of number two, since we got people sitting here. Maybe they don't want us to sit here all night. We're not that interesting.
Good evening, council. I'm Bob. I'm from the manufactured home community down here. What we're requesting is basically to be able to park fifth-wheel campers, you know, just basically snowbirds. Right now, we have-
Into the white, please.
I'm sorry. Basically, we're asking for permission to park, you know, a few snowbirds in the park. Specifically, we have a resident right now. She's, you know, got an ailment, so she had a good friend of hers who's a snowbird, park her fifth-wheel camper there to take care of her, and then her snowbird friend had a surgery, so they're kinda taking each, taking care of each other, and they're parked there. It's a fifth-wheel camper, and it's just we're asking permission to be able to do that. We're not aware that we had to ask permission for such a thing, so.
Okay. Anybody get a chance to read the zoning on that?
It is clearly currently against our zoning.
It is.
It is. It's clearly against. And you're wanting three, right?
Yes.
Is this a temporary, one-time thing, or is this gonna be permanent thing, I guess, is what you're asking?
I mean, we'd like the option to be able to have it. Obviously, I don't get calls for this, you know, it's kind of a one-time thing, but since it came to our attention, I believe we requested for three spots, just if it ever happens. I doubt it'll ever happen.
Do you have any input on this, Jason?
Well, you know, we have an ordinance in place that says we can't do it.
Okay.
It's no different than really a speeding ordinance. Speed limit is 55. We can't, we can't allow people to drive 75 or 85 and just enter a house and turn our head. We would have to amend our ordinance.
Is that possible to do then, or?
It is, yeah. It is, it is possible.
An ordinance's change is not a something we can do in a one-night, give you an answer.
Yes, I understand.
Correct.
It is not, and since this deals with planning and zoning, it really should be in front of planning and zoning board. Planning and zoning didn't make the recommendation. Now, you guys would have the final say. It could take two or three months-
Okay.
Right, right.
Because we'd have to have a public hearing. But ultimately, you guys would have the final say on it. And then the issue becomes, you know, is somebody in an R2 then going to want to do this? Is somebody in an R1 gonna want this to occur eventually?
I mean, in mobile home communities, it's pretty common to have long-term campers there. I see it all over the state.
In an RV?
Yes, RV or fifth-wheel camper. We're not talking about a campground or, you know, three, four-day stay here. We're talking about somebody who's out here, living there, they're working in the area temporarily, and they're going on to their next job or site. They're only here, they were requested from April to October 31st, which is generally, you know, before, you know, it warms up, gets cool, they go back, you know, or they go to their next site. We're not asking for around the year. We're not asking to store them there all year, you know, or have any water going at that time. We're just asking for, I believe it's April to October, so.
Are you asking for a seasonal camper?
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, I mean, for seasonal, but-
This is not gonna be somebody living there for 12 months.
No.
That's a seasonal camper.
Okay, I apologize. I'm not very familiar with the campgrounds.
I read this, and I read the application, and I read the review, and I contemplated this, and I reread it several times, and it occurred to me that we have at least two and probably closer to four temporary campsites within 12 miles. So I'm not sure that we should bend our ordinance, because 12 miles is not that far to come and visit mom and dad or come and take care of them. So I, I would motion that we not make this variance. I think there are other options, and I don't think that we should open that can of worms.
I would second that. All in favor of not amending the ordinance to allow campers?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we can move on to number two. Thank you, Jason, for your input.
Thank you.
This is the review, a portion of the 2022 budget.
Yeah, so I have on the screen here tonight, obviously Monday, July 12th. We're taking our budget, it's kind of been bits and pieces over the last few years, and you kinda slowly look at portions of the budget throughout the summer. So tonight, we'll spend some time, and I realize this is the first time you've looked at this, we're gonna look at the six different departments that you see on the screen. Some of these budgets aren't very big at all, but, you know, nevertheless, we still need to budget four items in there. If I can just explain tonight, and I'll explain this throughout the summer, our general fund budget, we need to have a draft budget, which has the tax levy in place by the end of September, and we submit that to the county. The county sends all of their, you know, budget hearing notices out to residents and stuff, and then by the end of December, we have our final budget that we can approve. So having said that, tonight, we're gonna look at three or four pages of the budget.
Let me add on to Clinton's here. When we set a budget at end of September, we say we set that 3% or whatever we set of that, I'm just throwing that number out there. We can go lower than that, but we can't go any higher than that. We can always reduce it at that point in time before we get to December. We can make more cuts or whatever we need to do, but we can't, we can't have 3.2 that at that point. We're stuck, that's our cap, that we can't go above. And this is a good start for our, taking, eating the elephant here with small chunks here. These are fairly small, but, but just to start with.
So then tonight, if there's a line item, you know, I can explain these, and if you have specific questions, and if you, as the council says, well, that's not a good idea, let's do it next year, then we take it out tonight. I mean, that's how we do this. So just looking at the screen, the budget document that the city council looks at is always gonna have the previous year on the left-hand side there.
The left-hand column.
It's always gonna have the previous year's budget. The next column is gonna be the year that we're in. And then YTD stands for year-to-date, so we put numbers in through the end of June, so that's pretty current. And then the 2022 draft, that's the column that we look at for, from now until December, okay? Before we get going, I am going to make a couple quick comments. As far as the personnel expenses, we are going to put a 3% cost of living adjustment into all of the wages for full-time and part-time employees. We're gonna start with that here in July. Tonight, you're gonna see here that the health insurance has a 10% increase from last year. I do have good news for you. Just today at, what, Andrew, when did I tell you, 11?
Yeah.
At about 11:00 AM, we found out that our, our health insurance is actually gonna be about a 4% increase this year. So even the health insurance numbers that you're looking at tonight are too high. So that's a good thing, right?
It was actually 4% rather than 10?
Four instead of 10, yep.
That's nice.
And then all other insurance items, property insurance, vehicle insurance, liability insurance, any type of insurance that we have, you know, through the league insurance trust, we have plugged in a 10% increase tonight. We always find out, I always joke, it's usually around Thanksgiving, but we always find out in about November what our final insurance rates will be. So before that final budget is done, we'll have the correct numbers plugged in. All right. On that top box, it says city council, that is you. That is your wages, training, anything that we need to fix up in this room. If you look at this year's budget compared to the proposed budget, it went up about $160, so that's pretty good shape. That budget is. The administrator budget includes wages, health insurance. The other benefits is all life insurance for all full-time employees. We just put that in that line item. And then, of course, you have your workers' comp, which I said, you know, we're looking at a 10% increase right now. And then the traveling conference for that budget. On the elections, on the bottom of the screen.
Oh, traveling conference. Do you have to do continuing ed and things, and who pays for that?
That's, that would be that, when I go over to the conference.
That is, and that's sufficient to fund your training?
Yeah.
All right, that's not my question. Thank you.
Last year it was zero, so I didn't go anywhere.
There's a lot of that going on.
Exactly, right, right. Yeah, I know that's sufficient, that works.
Yep.
On the bottom of the screen here, the elections, okay, every other year, we obviously have money in our election budget because we have our general elections, so that is an increase, obviously. Any questions on that first page?
Those numbers are pretty set in stone. I mean, there's not a lot of wiggle room in any of those numbers.
Yes, that is true. On the, on the second page, this is the accounting budget. The accounting budget basically takes care of all the expenses for some of our staff at City Hall. Some of the City Hall staff is included in this budget, and then also our auditing services, engineering fees, fees, traveling conference for some of the employees in the building here. And then professional services, which is about halfway down. That basically covers anything if we need to record something, if the county reporter, or if we need to file a fee with the county auditor, things like that. That comes from that professional services. This budget is gonna go up, as you can see, pretty much exactly $11,000. And basically, that's just for, you know, some increasing costs and the fees that we have, and the auditing services may go up a little bit. We're not quite sure. We really haven't gotten the final number yet from them. But the engineering fees, you know, some of that would be the safe routes project that costs for the fees to, for the studies to get done. Any questions on that department? Third page, the general government building. This is pretty much the City Hall budget, the budget for the building, okay? All the office supplies, operating supplies, things like that. Our safety program comes out of this budget, which is for several employees, but a lot of our insurance, we code back to the City Hall budget, okay? There are a couple things I want to point out to you tonight, though. Is this, is this okay on the screen? Can you read these numbers? This is where you say yes or no.
We've got them in front of us, too, so. As long as the crowd can see the numbers.
Well, I found it. I was actually talking to them, with all you guys.
Oh, we can see it good.
Okay.
I'm blind as a bat. You can see it.
We did put some money in next year's budget for landscaping around City Hall, and I don't know if we're gonna need to put that in next year's budget, because Sarah is actually, Sarah and I, mainly Sarah, she's working on getting some quotes and bids right now to kinda fix up stuff around the building this year. So that, that number may decrease a little bit. This might be tough to understand.
I was gonna ask about that.
All these are, okay. Our squad cars need to have their laptop computers replaced, because they're quite old, so we need to replace them. That'll be about $7,000. And then Channel 8, the software that, the programs that we run for Channel 8, we need to drastically upgrade that equipment, because it's really old and ancient. And we're probably, Sarah did some pricing. We're probably gonna have to spend about $11,000 or $12,000 fixing up that current system. A big question people ask all the time is, do you need Channel 8? And I would say, yes, you do, because we do have a number of residents that do use that as a service. You know, back in the day, that was like the only thing.
That was the only thing, right.
But people still, you know, residents still do use, they still do use that. So it is something that we need to consider keeping.
And you might be able to use some of those funds from the stimulus plan.
Maybe.
For some of that.
Yep. So with that City Hall budget that I'm talking about, you're gonna see that there's about a $30,000 increase from the budget that we're sitting in right now. But those increases are kinda highlighted with what I just shared with you. I mean, that's $30,000 of what-
On the 300 professional services there for the citywide cleanup-
Yep.
You've mentioned there, we only spent- You had mentioned there, we only spent, you know, third of what we expected to.
Yep.
On there. Is that budgeted in to do that every year, or is that?
I did put five thousand dollars in next year's line item for the citywide, if we do it every year.
Traditionally, we do it every other year, but it got so expensive, we did it every three years.
Yep.
Um, I know what your thoughts are on that. Do we need to do it every other year, every year?
Well, if we're able to keep the cost down, it's truly a nice service to have every year.
Yeah, but keeping that five thousand, I mean, it'd be nice.
I think if you have it every year, you're gonna keep your cost down because people are gonna be bringing new stuff in.
And on three years versus? Was it over three years?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it, isn't that cost based on how much is brought up here as well?
Yeah.
It's all the tonnage.
Yeah.
We sent her through that one year where they skipped two years, and then they found out that in year three, they had more junk than nothing.
That's what happened to us three weeks ago. Are we okay with keeping the five thousand in there for now? You know, when this comes to the end, when we're looking at November, December, there's, we may have to cut a few things, so maybe we do it then.
Sixteen thousand dollars for the last daily expense around the building seems high, so we can, I would rather see the five thousand toward the cleanup and we can maybe cut some of that.
That's not just landscaping, though. Some of that is the, um, the security for the building, you know, the cameras and all that stuff. Some of that cost is in there too. I actually put ten thousand dollars in for landscaping, is what I think. Well, yeah, and like, that could be something we end up doing this year.
At this point, no, I'd sure like to, to keep that five thousand in there.
I'd, I'd rather see the, cut the five thousand out of the landscaping versus the citywide cleanup.
Absolutely.
You know, only put five thousand in landscaping and instead of the full ten.
Yep.
And keep the citywide cleanup. My thoughts. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that.
I can, I'll do that. I'll just, instead of sixteen thousand, I'll make that eleven thousand.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. And then remember too, the health insurance is lowered already, so.
Yep.
Right. That'll help too.
Yep. Um, the very last page that we look at just tonight is, sorry, unallocated. It's kinda the last page of the budget. I don't really wanna call it a catch-all, but it's, it's unallocated in our chart of accounts. We pay the Park Road Plaza board members for their monthly meetings out of this budget. We also, if you look at professional services, it says thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, that's a program, Mike, you can maybe explain this a little bit too, but years ago, it was discovered that if we charged the nursing home rent for their city home building, they will be reimbursed by the state of Minnesota for the rent they pay. So, as a result of this, we charge rent and they get reimbursed back, so it's kind of a, it's kind of a wash, but it's a good program for the nursing home 'cause they're, they actually come out a little ahead of that, actually.
Well, I think we oughta be raising their rent then.
I'm kinda, no, because that's rent. I'm off, it's pretty much, we were told we had it.
I think you are, yeah.
Yeah. Um, the next line, the miscellaneous.
Maybe that cap is increased.
Uh, the miscellaneous line item, okay, that, basically, that has three items in there, and one of them is brand-new this year. One is, we do pay property taxes on, on some land, so we, we budget for that, property taxes. Um, and for the last, the three years now, we have, the city council has budgeted five thousand dollars into the city budget to help Janesville Matters on projects that are within city property or the city right of way. So, we, we continue to do that. And then also, um, I was talking with Russ Leebol on the Park Road Plaza board. Jim, maybe you can help a little bit with this. Uh, he was suggesting that he or the Park Road Plaza may ask the city to budget some money to help pay a payment in lieu of taxes to Wasika County. I really haven't heard anything in the last month or so about that, so that's in there now. It may or may not be in there in November or December.
And that's about thirteen thousand?
And that's thirteen thousand, yep. And quite honestly, that little department budget went up exactly thirteen thousand because of that. As you can see, everything else stayed safe.
Correct.
Where are you looking at coding the safer outs to school money then?
Um, I'm thinking it would probably have to be either in the public works or if we, or parks perhaps, um, or depending on, this may be a question for the auditors, but the school and city are gonna share the local match in that grant, so I don't, maybe we create a special project fund, I don't know.
Has that been, is there been a percentage decided that the school's gonna pay this and we're gonna pay this? Not yet?
No, not yet.
I just know that you hadn't possibly mentioned coded here, so that's why I brought it up.
What's that?
I just know that you had possibly mentioned you were gonna throw it in unallocated, so that's why I didn't know, so I asked.
Oh, I know, and then I kinda changed my mind.
We do have the safer out to schools budgeted and, uh, engineering fees here in the counting site too.
That's just engineering fees. That's, but I'm talking the actual project.
That's not reimbursable to the project, though?
Um, some of it can be, but it's always good to budget for the engineering.
Yes, I agree, but I'm just saying, should maybe, if we're doing a special project line, start putting that in there, budget a special project.
I have been project coding it.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
But you're gonna be gone for a while, so I gotta make sure.
I've, I've explained that process.
Already. So, that's kind of a, a first round robin for you on the, on the council here. That's just kinda how we do it. Now, in years past, we would spend a good chunk of one evening going through it all, but I think it's easier to do it bit by bit. Any questions, or I will remove five thousand out of landscaping, and like I said, that might not even be a, a budget issue to talk about next year. We may be able to cover it this year. You never know.
Okay.
Any questions, Michael? I do care about them. I heard that comment, yeah. Um, yeah, anything else?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We, uh, close, uh, the session for, uh, administrator performance review at, uh, seven fifty-five.
Second.
Good morning, y'all.
All in favor?
Aye.